Good evening. Call to order, the meeting of Monday, October 16th, 2017. We'll all rise and salute the flag.
Mr. Vice President.
Roll Club of the Members, Councilor Gennino, here.
Here.
Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here. Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here. Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here. Councilor Nowosowski.
Here.
Here. Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here. Councilor Rotundo.
Here.
Here. Councilor Zambudo was absent. And Council Vice President Keith.
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Mr. Vice President, appoint a personal purpose, please.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Tonight, I'd like to start off by a little remembrance of Christie Gennino. I'm wearing a pin here that the Italian-American flag that Christie gave me many years ago. He always asked me, "You still got my pin?" But other than that, this past week, as you know, the City of Revere lost one of its favorite sons, and the Gennino family lost their family patriarch. Former longtime local businessman and retired 32-year veteran of the Revere Fire Department, Christie Gennino, who lost his courageous battle October 6th. So at this time, I ask that we gather in a moment of silence.
Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like the Council and the audience to indulge in a moment of silence with respect to Roger Naples, who passed away this weekend. Roger was a career 40-year employee of the City of Revere. Was very much involved with the youth of our city, whether it was basketball, baseball, or softball, whatever it was. I had the pleasure of working with Roger for 23 years, and I don't think he would find a finer gentleman in the City of Revere, or a person with a stronger interest in the youth of our city. And so I would like to ask that we all stand in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may all also speak from the chair, not to overshadow the city's great losses over the last week, my heartfelt sympathy is to the Gennino family and to the Napolitano family, Roger Naples family. Most recently, we did pass a motion approving for special legislature to go through to present Roger with a plaque at the MDC rink, or the DCR rink. And I'm happy to say that through the help of Speaker DeLeo's office and Representative Vincent's office, it's moved along very quickly, and that plaque and his honor should be finalized, hopefully within the, before the end of the year. We were hoping to get it done while Roger was still with us, but I know that on his last few days, his close friends were able to tell him that that was going through, and it brought a smile to his face. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. President.
Counselor.
Not to overshadow what you've done, and I thank you for that, because Roger and I were good friends, but I did, I just left the wake, and I talked to the family, and they would like to see one at the stadium also. So I would, you know, hope that we can get the DPW to, or Paxton Rec, to put something underneath the window, outside the booth, underneath the window, that he broadcast from when he did the PA at the stadium. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 2nd, 2017. The Joint Utility Company meeting will now meet.
Thank you, Counselors, and it's a pleasure to be back. Spent some time, and we appreciate that you've given us that time. Currently, we have a grand total of 135 poles in the community. We're coordinating efforts to remove as many as we can, just speaking with Comcast, Tim, in understanding the Park Avenue issue, at least along that school front. We're looking to get those coordinated and moved as quickly as possible. Those would be the next area priority for Verizon in removal. So with that, open it up to my colleagues.
Thank you, Stan. For the record, Tim Kelly, Comcast Government Affairs. Good to be here with you this evening. Want to introduce, it's bittersweet, so I'm going to stay with Comcast, but I'm moving on to a different role. So I have my colleague here, Angela Home, from the City of Boston, Brighton. She's tough, but I think this body will definitely give her, you know, her due when it comes to the double poles. But I am confident that she's going to be able to fill my role, probably exceed what I've done. An upgrade, as people say internally, so I just wanted to introduce Angela to this body, and to say thank you, honestly, for, you know, I know we've been in front of you many times, but it's always been civil, respectful, and, you know, for that, I'm quite thankful. So thank you.
Just like to say hello to you all, and I look forward to working with you.
Dan Cameron, with National Grid, and good to be back as well. And looking at the report, obviously, there's, we have some work to do. A lot of poles have been removed, but a fair amount of them now are waiting for our transfers, and we'll be moving on, getting those transfers done as well.
Counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Guanasso?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Dan for the speedy work that we did at the corner store on Revere Street. We certainly, Fury's Market was without power. Dan came to the rescue. We pleaded with you, and now we have full cooperation, and we have full power. And I want to thank you and National Grid for the great effort that you've done. Having said that, now comes a slam. Oxford Park, and I mentioned this a year and a half to two years ago, in reference to, I worked feverishly to get that repaved. We had it repaved. National Grid came in and did the entire length of roadway work. And what they've done, they've left me with a giant divot, the whole length of the entire Oxford Park. And to me, that is really, Dan, that's quite unacceptable, because that's not the condition that was given when they dug it up. And we worked so hard to get that in the first place, and the funds for repaving of streets and sidewalks are so limited, that when we get one, and then within months, a utility company comes in and destroys it, it really is harmful to the community. And personally, I feel affronted by it, because I worked so hard to get that done. So, again, in spirit cooperation, can you go visit Oxford Park? You'll see it. It's the whole entire length of the street, and we've done yeoman's work to keep that park up. We have a beautiful beautification in the front with flowers, and we keep the park itself kept well. But traversing it now is really a problem. And now we're coming across the months of plowing, and it's even going to get worse. So that's one of the major names. I will put that before double poles at this particular time, if I can get that sort of cooperation from you. That would be a movement in the right direction at this time.
So this was a brand-new street that we wouldn't do?
It was a brand-new street a year ago, and now it looks like it needs repair again, and all, because I said this a year and a half ago. If you do it, do it right, and please fill it right, and they didn't do that.
Okay.
And I was on it then, and I'm on it now, and I just find it very painful to see it as it exists today. Again, I look forward to your help. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Dan. We have two poles on Winthrop Ave. One, I think we've talked about it, it's 740 Winthrop Ave. I think it's either 75 or 76 pole number. It has cement around it. I think we've talked about this a couple of times, and the cement is still not removed, and it's on the sidewalk, and it's on a crosswalk on a corner. So I don't know why this hasn't been removed, the cement, but it's around the pole, and it's a double pole. It's right on the corner. And then we got a new double pole, which I thought we were trying to get rid of double poles. And that's in 738 Winthrop Ave. We got a brand-new double pole. And I was just wondering why that was going on.
As far as the condition of the base of the pole, I think we may have mentioned at our last meeting, but there's been a change between National Grid and Verizon, where we used to sort of split the responsibility as to who would set poles and who would remove them.
Okay.
Now, National Grid is going to set all poles in every community, and Verizon will be removing all poles once everyone has transferred off. I mean, this one here, I mean, it may have been set by Verizon, but I think the, in the spirit of not going back, we will take care of this, because under the old rules, it would have been Verizon, because they would have sent the old.
So you'll remove the cement?
We will, yes.
Okay, great. That'd be great.
So I just want to let you know that going forward, it's all National Grid.
And why, if we're starting to get, we're trying to get rid of the double poles, why was there a new one put up?
I'm not sure.
Two months ago.
It could be the age of the pole, could have been, maybe it was hit, you know, there's several reasons why we need to set a new pole.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I have three matters that I would like to discuss. The first one is 71 Milano Ave, pole number three. I have an email here that I, that I sent out on May 1st, asking Dan to see who is next up to disconnect at the pole at 71 Milano Ave, pole number three. Since that time, everything has been removed, I believe, from the old pole.
Yeah, Stan just mentioned that to me. Everyone's off of it, apparently. We just need to get it out of the system, which.
Yeah, it's on blocks. It's, I've had several discussions with Stan. I just want the people, residents of Milano Ave, to know that it's been a continual conversation between you and Verizon. It's just, I wish it'd be a little, it could happen a little quicker.
Yeah, well, I believe we need to remove that from the system, which we'll do tomorrow. That'll enable the schedule of Verizon to go on removal. We'll take care of it.
Okay, but just check it out first.
Yep.
Okay. The second, the other pole is, in my experience, a little experience I do have, but I really think it's a public safety issue. It's pole 3477, next to 81 Sardner Street. It's down by the Doggy Park.
The other one I looked at the other day.
Actually, you were down there last, I believe, last week.
Right.
And I was there today with the superintendent of the DPW, Donnie Goodwin, because that's the problem, the electrical problem there, which is, to me, is unsafe. I think you both have to work together to correct this problem. Am I right on this, or?
Yeah, we do, because I think, like I was explaining to, it's the wire coming out of that pipe on the pole is actually owned by the city. So we have to transfer everything from the old pole to the new pole, and work with the city, and get that slack taken out of that wire.
Right. Well, Dan, also, I mean, it's been, it's been months. I mean, I believe, I don't know if it was an accident or the pole split, but it was an emergency that you had to put that pole there. But you still have the transformer on the old pole. I mean, I can't see why it couldn't have, at least, you have to start the ball going.
We do.
So I don't understand why it's taken so long just to move the transformer, transformer, and then let everybody else remove their stuff.
It's just a matter of, I mean, it's just been extremely busy, but we'll get it taken through.
Well, you know, I believe that, you know, in the wintertime, and I'll even give you new shoes on the, on the, maybe some crews you had to send on Hurricanes, the different states. But the spring and summer, that's the time, isn't that the time to really go out and move this stuff?
It is, but like I said, we've, we've been hit with a lot of customer work, too, you know, a lot of construction going on. But we'll, we'll take care of it.
Like I say, I really do believe it's a public safety, and I think, I actually even got an email here from Stan. Counselor Patch, there are two low wires coming off the pole in front of House 81. One is electrical service, the other is, was cable. Cable went right down and fixed, you know, when I contacted the both of yous, cable went right down and fixed it, their wire. But I'm more nervous about the electric wire.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was in, that was June, June 1st. So, you know, it's got a, we get, like I say, it could be a public safety problem there. One other quick one on Michael Road. Where do we stand there, right? I believe it's the only one you have on Michael Road? Remember, we had the problem with, it was some kind of other outfit that had a wire there?
Dan just pointed it out to me. It is, it is another entity. I'll track through the data system who it is and give you the contact for it.
Well, that's not the same data company that we had. I thought we had that removed.
No, that was a different, that was a different location and a different company.
No, it's the same loca, it's the same location.
I don't believe so. If it is, I'll look at it, and I'll find out who the contact is, and I'll make that contact.
Because they moved the one we, you only got one double pole there.
Okay.
So you, are you saying there's two other companies?
No, no. I'm sorry, this is something that we had discussed more than a year ago.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's why the neighbors are getting a little upset.
And that's the name I had given to you. They were contacted and told to move, and apparently, they have?
I emailed the company that you gave me.
Right.
And he emailed, I believe, the both of us, and told us that it was removed.
Okay. Well, I'll send a crew out to take a look at that. I think we're next, if I'm not mistaken.
I appreciate if you do that.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mr.
Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I normally would be questioning several different issues, but Dan Cameron has been working with me on many of those issues, and I would like to publicly thank you tonight, Dan, for the quick response to getting that fellow down to 1069 North Shore Road, not once, but twice, and the letter I received from you the other day, which will allow us to move ahead, hopefully within the next week, on the demolition of that blighted property on 1069 North Shore Road. And I certainly want to thank you for your help. I'd be often up here being critical if something wasn't done, but you worked very fast on this, and I want to thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Counsel Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Gentlemen and ladies, congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations to you. See you later. Anyway, I guess I want to go over the few on the existing list that I think are simple issues. You have Damon Street, D-A-M-O-N, on there, at pole 644. Right? Okay, that pole was all removed, it's gone, and Damon Street is not there, is not the right street, it was actually Dehong Street. So that's, that was a duplicate of that. That shouldn't be on the, on your list. So whoever, whoever removes them from the new G, take them off. The next item is Nehant Ave, pole 3921. It shows the next in line was National Grid, and they did their work about six months ago, so whoever has to post that and get the next in line to do it, because RFD was next, and they actually did their part already, despite, you know. And then, that's the one I spoke to you about, Tim, that, when I looked at it, National Grid hadn't gone into the system and knocked it out, and Revere tried to go in to knock it out, but they couldn't, because National Grid was already on there. Now, since National Grid has now taken down poles.
No. No.
Putting them in?
We're installing, Verizon is removing.
Oh, good. Well, I'll still.
When everyone's transferred.
Okay, well, I'll go after you again on Revere Beach Parkway, pole number 48, across from the Sunoco Station. We're talking seven years now that this, I'll call it a naked pole, it's, it's been, everything's been removed from that for years.
You said pole 48, right?
That looks like, Counselor, that looks like it's ours.
Whomever. Whoever, just take it down. Get rid of it. All the wires are off, they've been off, like I said, for many, many years, and.
And that's the only one on Revere Beach Parkway?
That, yes. Out of all those wooden poles, yes. It's right across from the Sunoco Station at the crosswalk. And then, Dan, on you, on my light upgrade on Ocean Avenue at those crosswalks.
Yep.
I know folks are still asking for that.
And the, and the one down by Dunkin' Donuts as well, right?
The one by Dunk, oh, yes.
You want a 400 there.
Yeah, to upgrade that light, right. Because that's not even on this list, because it's not a really, it's not a double pole, it's just something that we wanted originally. I have Florence Ave, pole 719, it's a Verizon issue, that's back February of 2016. And then on National Grid, I got Clock Road, Campbell Ave, and Hillside Ave, that have been since February and March of 2016. Campbell, Clock, and Hillside. The other two I have are Revere Fire, and I'll work with them on that, on those two.
If I could, Counselor, in talking to Tim on Park Avenue, of course, there are about 10, I think 10, 10 that are in Comcast Ballin Court. What I'd like to do is be able to get those into our court, so that we can come in and get all the ones that are in our Ballin Court combined, so that we're not coming back twice. And Tim tells me that he can do this in relatively short fashion, so that we can try to get these addressed before the holidays.
What's your definition of short fashion?
I'm hopeful.
Before the winter?
Yeah, before the holidays.
Which holiday?
Yes.
You say Halloween, it's next week. I'll accept that. Thank you very much.
It's not a Halloween for me. I live in Salem.
All right, you know.
It just makes it easier.
Thanksgiving?
That's what I would shoot for.
Is that more reasonable?
That's what I would shoot for, and at least it would give us in excess of 24 to come in and knock them all out.
Okay. You know, I'll accept that, but, you know, come December, first week in December, and you're here. The wrath.
No, I understand that. And I can't make a commitment in terms of absolute dates, and we all know that, but, you know, I think it makes it a lot easier to deploy in a way that gets our people in for an extended period of time, rather than, you know, a day at a time and doing two or three. Let's try to knock them all out, and that includes Counselor Patch's pole, too.
Can live with that. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back to all my friends here. First of all, let me congratulate Tim on his promotion, and congratulate you on coming to Revere. Unfortunately, you've got some big shoes to fill, because I have him up on a pedestal because of the way he responds to anything I've ever given him, right there, right away. So you've got big shoes to fill, and again, I wish you well. You're a professional, you've always been a professional, and I know that's why they're promoting you. So good for them. And good for you to come here to this stepping stone to another big promotion later down the road, if you do what he does. Listen, I don't have, I've been here long enough to know when we didn't have this group, and we weren't getting this good stuff done, and this has been such a wonderful collaborative effort, that we finally have a way to get down these double poles, and we actually make progress on it. So I'm thrilled with it. I know it's not perfect, but we're certainly a lot better than we were even a dozen years ago. So I thank you all for your efforts, and you're all true professionals. Dan, you're always there whenever I call you, and sometimes they're not easy tasks, but you step up to the plate. Stan, you, you know, you're obviously a professional, and Verizon thinks very highly of you, as I do. So thank you all. I know this sounds like a love fest, but it's, you know, I remember when we used to bang our heads against the wall to try to get some of this stuff done. It's done on a regular basis now, and it's, it's good to see. Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Rotundo?
Thank you. Good evening, all. Couple of questions, perhaps you can help me understand this a little bit better. We have 135 double poles currently, is that true?
That's correct.
Do we have a stratification as to the time that they've been double poles, how many years out?
Yeah, that's, that's in the list and on the printout that I sent to the.
Unfortunately, I don't have it, so.
Okay. I can resend it to you, and it gives the.
How many of them are greater than a year old, is my question?
I would say a great number of them.
So greater than two-thirds?
I would say yes to that.
Okay. And so Verizon is the group that's removing them, and then obviously, National Grid will be installing new poles, is that correct?
Yeah, the way that the system ordinarily used to work in the past, we would set, we had the set here, and we would set the poles, and then at the end, because they were cut at the bottom, we would take the poles. So in order to simplify things throughout the, with the working areas of both Grid and Verizon, the companies have come to an agreement whereby Grid would set the poles, and we would take the poles once everybody was transferred, which just simplified things.
So I'm not a little bit nicer than my colleagues here, I'm a different type of guy. I believe in results. You've got three companies here that have assets well over a trillion dollars with well over 100,000 employees. We're a small city. You have 135 poles here, and I'd like to know in what timeframe you'd be able to get rid of all of them, please. of them, please.
I couldn't begin to give you an estimate.
Six months?
It all depends on how transfers work.
All right, because my understanding is...
And I will tell you, Counselor, that you'll never get to zero. It's just...
It's an ongoing process. I get that.
Correct.
But, you know, reading Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 164, Section 34B, it requires you to do this within a certain timeframe. In fact, that timeframe is a year, and then it gives you stipulations based upon who uses...
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, what can you tell me in relative terms that you can accomplish within six months?
Well, I think, as I stated in my opening statement, I guess it would be at least two-thirds of the 135 are in our court, so...
Can you get 50 done within six months?
I'd say that's reasonable, yeah. But I'd like to just take a step back, because something is part of the, this new process that will help, is that in the communities where we always set the poles, we set it, we transfer it at the same time. In communities where Verizon sets the poles, the transfer has to be scheduled. So we think it's going to work better in the future, you know? We set a new pole, we transfer right away. Gets the process going much quicker.
Would it be unreasonable to request that in six months you come back before us to see if you've reached that benchmark of 50?
I think that's achievable. I can't guarantee it, but I think we can head in that direction, yes.
Thank you kindly.
Yep.
Counselor Guanasso, one more thing?
I have one question for Dan.
Oh, yeah.
49 Washington Street. They have a light in front of their home that goes off and on, and that's a very dimly lit area adjacent to the Paravia School, and many of the children in the area frequent that location. It's...
I think I just, did I just get an email on that today?
You might have.
Yeah.
But I'm just following up. It's 49 Washington Street.
Okay.
It goes on and goes off.
Yep. We just replaced it. The starter is gone in the bowl.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Welcome, Angela. Thanks for your years of service working with us. Congratulations. I have two questions. One is on a poll that Arthur Guanasso mentioned, and I did back in April of 2015. We brought it up a few times. It's on poll 3286 on American Legion Highway. There used to be a light pole at the top.
Well, there used to be a light there, and there's no more light?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, I think at the time of the, when we had the tornado, at the time of the tornado, that's when the light, the pole was broken, and they never, they replaced the pole, but without the light.
Yeah, okay. All right. Yeah, we'll check that tomorrow. As long as it's in the building where it's still...
Because it's in the area that is traversed frequently by pedestrians. Also, there's...
Counsel, where approximately is that on? Give me a landmark where that is.
It's at the corner of Stanton and American Legion.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, currently, there's a, it's the, I know National Grid is doing work ahead of the MassDOT Safe Route to School program on North Shore Road and ending at Cove Street. About, I was told that it's going to last about two months, so October 17th is the two-month date. Is it, can I extend longer for the first phase, or will, should we assume that it's going to be complete by October 17th?
Let me find that. I remember the emails on that. Let me find out the schedule and see when we're going to, and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, and thank you for quickly responding to me.
Yep.
Thanks.
Counselor Pach?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I did have a couple that I forgot to mention. Dan, if you remember, I called you at the corner of Keeney Street and Squire Road. Doughboy uniform, police, police supplies moved into the corner, and there's no light. There was no light on the, on the pole. This was, this has been a couple of months, too.
Did you want one there?
The problem is, every, every last pole on Squire Road with all those side streets, like the Newman, Locken, they all, they all have a pole, and it's, if you go down Keeney at nighttime, it's very dark. Now, he has, he keeps some, maybe some late hours. It's very dark there.
Okay.
And I, we spoke. You were going to put a work order in, and eventually we talked again, and you know the owner, Paul Simeoni, that you did some, we had some tragedy in the city or something, that you rode with him.
Yeah.
You said that you were going to work with him to get, to get it done.
Yeah. I thought there was a light already. I'll have to look into it, but I thought...
No, the very last, it's the very last pole on Keeney.
Yeah.
And if you notice, every street that comes down from Alden Street into, into Squire, the last pole always has, it has a light. That's the only street that does not, and if, he desperately needs a light there.
Okay. Well, if we have your approval, we can, the city's approval, we can, we can do that, you know, so...
Is that what?
Yeah.
An upgrade?
Yeah. If there's no light there...
Yeah.
And there never was, and we just need the city's approval, and we can, we can add it to the system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also, on the pole between 49 and 51 Roland Ave, that's the last one that I believe that we, went through 311 to, and you responded quickly to fix it. That was like the second time you fixed it.
Yeah.
And now it's, it's out again, so it needs, it must need a new, a whole new structure.
Yeah, probably needs a new fixture. Counsel, what was it, 49 to 51?
Roland.
Roland, okay.
Roland.
Okay.
And also, thank you. And, Tim, I just, I forgot the, I, no, you, I want to...
Mr. Vice President.
I want to congratulate, no, I just, all I want to do is congratulate you, and thank you for, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And good luck in the future.
Thank you.
And Angela, don't leave without leaving your card.
Absolutely.
Please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And actually, it looks like someone in the audience wanted to have something to say?
Name and address for the record. Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. I just wanted to share with you guys a photo from Agawam Street. I did put a ticket in with the city's three-year-long services. I was informed that they did reach out to you guys. There's some low-hanging power lines and children in the area. I'd just like to get those tightened up. I don't know if that's Verizon or National Grid, or who can help with that.
Yeah, that would be, I was up there.
Okay.
We're probably underneath, I guess.
So...
The whole thing's...
Yeah, it's all sagging down, as you can see.
Where is it?
That's 7 Agawam Street. The poles, I believe, are 2525 and 745.
Thank you. We can, we can enter, we can give you that information as well, and just to wrap this up, I think that you preempted my, my Park Ave concerns, and they've been some concerns, so I appreciate you. It looks like you're going to address those. I'm keeping the calendar circled right around Thanksgiving, and we hope to have the Park Ave poles taken care of. I'm not sure if that includes the mini substation that's outside of the school, if that's going to end up being relocated. I'm not, can you answer that for me?
I know that's a separate issue, not involved with double poles, and it does involve both our companies.
Thank you. And so the poles on the stadium side of Park Ave, they will be, they will be taken out, right?
Anything that's listed as a double pole in this report will be taken out as soon as, I think there's only one that has Grid on it.
Yeah, there's, there's one with the service to the stadium. It's an underground service that comes off the pole, and obviously very costly to move that across the street. So I think the decision was to leave that pole. That's down the end near the stadium, you know, so...
Okay, thank you. And once again, congratulations, Tim and Angela. It looks like you drew the short straw. Good luck. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Janino, would you like to give us an update on the zoning subcommittee?
The zoning subcommittee met earlier this evening. Councilors Keefe, McKenna, and Counselor Guanasso were present for this meeting, and we met with members of the Beautification Committee to discuss amendments to zoning ordinance relative to billboards. So this is something that there's currently a moratorium against billboards in our city that the late councillor Haas, council president Haas, put forward, and this is something that he worked diligently on during his time on the council, so we're trying to continue that legacy and that wish of councillor Haas. So we met today with the Beautification Committee to discuss these billboards and possible ordinances and how to get a committee started to take care of this. The mayor signed the moratorium in September, so we have six months from that date to work on this and get some revisions to our current ordinances moving forward within that timeframe, and that is our goal. So we've established a committee, and we're going to meet several times to review all the different billboards in the city and what ordinances we can do to tighten any loose ends. It was a very productive meeting, and I thank everyone for attending.
Thank you, Counselor.
On to motions. Counsel Order 17-366, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor requests the police department to adopt a policy in which the department notifies abutting residences living within 300 meters of a Level 3 sex offender. A photo, address, and the crime committed should be included on the notice. Further, let this notice be mailed annually.
Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. Unfortunately, the ACLU had taken the city to court regarding not allowing sex offenders to live near a school, playground, et cetera, which, call me stupid, but it's crazy that you would allow a pedophile to live with children congregate considering that they're high risk of recidivism. At the very least, we can circumvent that law legally and let the people who live within the area know where these people live, and it's within our right, and as far as I'm concerned, it's our duty. They do this in several states. It's passed the muster at the Supreme Court, and this is a notification process, and I think we have a right to do it, and I think we should.
Any other councils wishing to speak? No? I appreciate, oh, we have a member of the audience.
Good evening, Counsel. Anthony Cargleandro, 105 Newman Street. Counselor Rotundo, is it possible to add Level 2 sex offenders to that list as well?
I think we would have to give that to the city solicitor and ask them for an opinion on that, but I think that would be worthwhile.
Absolutely, because they show up in public searches. You can't publicly search Level 1s, and it's based on the chance they'll reoffend as well.
Someone urinating out in the middle of the street is considered a Level 1 sex offender, so clearly that's not someone that I would deem an issue, but someone that has, you know, a record of raping a child or molesting a child, clearly that would be the case. And kind of odd that recently down on Shirley Avenue, there were people out there protesting about being evicted when one of the people that were there was a Level 3 sex offender, and I was just appalled at it. And then to be told by the homeowner, by the property owner, that the city of Revere actually drops children off in front of that particular house. I was floored, and just literally notified of it today, so I plan on bringing that up with superintendent via email and asking if they stop dropping that bus off there if they could, but there's got to be greater scrutiny here. Thank you.
I hope it goes through. The more notification, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I couldn't agree with you more, and I'd be in full support of this. Motion approved.
Counsel Order 17-367, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor requests the DCR to provide an emergency person on duty to open the Beauchamp Pump Station to extract rainwater from the lower end of Beauchamp when inclement weather is approaching. Due to the extremely heavy rainfall on September 30th, streets were flooded, causing houses to flood. It took DCR over four hours to open the pumps.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So on September 30th, and I know it wasn't predicted, but we had three inches of rain in one hour, and what happened is Beauchamp is lower than sea level, so flooding was terrible, and many of the houses got flooded because the pump station took four hours, DCR took four hours to open the pump and station to withdraw the water. So what I'm asking is if we do know the prediction of the weather that's going to happen, that we have an emergency person go down there before this weather happens and make sure that these pumping stations are open, so we won't have this problem occur again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Counsel Order 17-368, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor requests the MBTA to dredge the county ditch on their Blue Line property from Shirley Avenue to Route 145 overpass bridge behind the Garfield School. This motion should also be sent to our state delegation for their assistance.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. This is an ongoing issue with the county ditch along the Blue Line, because they will not allow, not these mosquito control, nor any city of employees to go on the track side of the fence. So we have to go through delegation, because the T isn't very cooperative. It's been eight years since the last time that was dredged out, and the former manager, Daly, who eventually became the Transportation Commissioner's secretary, helped us out back then, but now it's time to do it again, and, you know, as Counselor McKenna said, when we had all that rain on the 30th, it couldn't go anywhere. You know, all the outfalls were blocked with debris, and nobody can do anything about it. If anybody goes behind the Garfield School, they'll see, they'll see a cave-in, literally a cave-in, right by the entrance to the garage, and that's all because of the blockage underneath the pedestrian crossover, and the T wouldn't clean it out for us, and now the line has collapsed, and it's going to cost us a lot of extra money to replace that drainage line. So hopefully, state delegation, and they've been very helpful in the past working with the T, and I hope they can make it happen again, and sooner than later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Counsel Order 17-369, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor requests the Revere DPW to remove the news racks from the Shirley Avenue sidewalks at the entrance and exit of the Revere Beach MBTA Station.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thing is self-explanatory.
Motion to approve?
Counsel Order 17-370, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor requests the traffic commission to extend the residential permit parking zone on Garfield Ave from Dick Street to Blake Street, both sides from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, I received several calls from the neighbors between Dick Street and Blake, and it seems though now that the folks using the MBTA Blue Line are extending their walks from the Garfield School all the way down to the T. And normally, it's 7:00 AM to 12:00, but in this case, what I'm doing is I'm working with the school, and this allows the parents to go down and drop the kids off, pick them up for their lunch, you know, the midterm pickup for the younger kids, and not get tagged for permit packing. So this will hopefully come up at the next traffic commission meeting and set up for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Counsel Order 17-371, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor requests the DPW to install a veteran memorial sign for Robert Finestone at 207 Shirley Avenue between the Bagel Bin and 4 O' Square. at two-oh-seven Shirley Avenue between the Bagel Bin and Four O' Square.
Counsel, your fourth motion? You only spoke on two, though, so it's okay.
No, I can speak on three.
Correct.
And I've only spoken on two.
Correct.
So, this is my third one, Counsel.
Just making sure. I didn't, you snuck another one in there.
Kasha couldn't count.
I just don't think I wasn't counting.
Yeah, I know you were. Mr. Vice President, Bobby Feinstone passed away in August, and believe it or not, before he passed, and actually several years before he passed, he said, "Ira, if I get anything out of this city, I want, I want a memorial sign in front of the Bagel Bin." So, the least I can do is ask for it and have the city put it up, and the family's looking forward to it, and I'm sure they'll have a nice party at the Bagel Bin when the event happens, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Any councils wishing to speak? Motion to approve?
Counsel Order seventeen dash three-seventy-two, motion presented by Counselor Keith, that the mayor requests the school department to review the feasibility of adding a crossing guard at the school bus stop on the corner of Dale Street and Park Avenue.
Any counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I'll make it brief, but as you know, this area has a notorious island, and it's, obviously Park Ave is a very busy street. I've been trying to do everything I could to get different traffic signals or some sort of blinking speed limits, and of course, the raised crosswalks that I've been asking for, for a few years, just don't seem to be getting that through. So, I think at the least, during school hours, there's a bus stop drop-off right at that Dale Street and Park Ave intersection. A lot of kids get off the bus, and not a lot of caution is taken. They run in front of the bus sometimes, even though when that stop sign is stuck out, it's, it's just really, it's a really dangerous area. I'd like to see if we can spend a few dollars to have a crossing guard there five days a week during school hours. I think it would be worthwhile for the protection of the children, but Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this motion wholeheartedly. That is a terrible area. I think that there should be something done to remove that island or restructure that. That thing is a disaster waiting to happen. It's, it's really a dangerous area. So, I don't know what the, somebody should look at the feasibility of altering that situation there. I don't know who designed that, but whoever, they were on some kind of a substance, I believe. It's very dangerous.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Guanasso?
Through the campaign season, you hold signs in the morning, and you see the value of the crossing guards at each location. Certainly, it's a job well-intended, and schoolchildren are protected by the type of work they do and perform. It's amazing, and any additional personnel that we can add on to alleviate the safety factor for our children is well-deserved, and I think this is well-deserved, and I think this is a very needed area. But again, the, they're really heroes going out there every day throughout the elements and working, and the way they cross the children and they have conversations with them, they bring the spirit of goodwill already to the child before they even reach the front door of the school, so this is a good motion, and I applaud all the crossing guards throughout the city.
Thank you, Counsel. And in reference to Counsel Zambudo's remarks, I too, I do think the island is a good idea. I do believe the design could have been better implemented, and I have, we all have approved to have it relooked at, but unfortunately, it hasn't been changed. But we'll keep, we'll keep fighting that fight, but certainly in the meantime, if we can get some crossing guards or some, even if we have to have a police officer there during school drop-off and pickup, it's worth it. We want to make sure that we're protecting the kids getting off that bus, so thank you. Motion approved?
Counsel Order seventeen dash three-seventy-three, motion presented by Counselor Janino, that the mayor requests the DPW to install a veteran memorial pole in honor of U.S. Army veteran Christie Janino at the corner of Maldon and Sigourney Streets, next to his father's memorial pole.
Counsel Janino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I can honestly say this is the most difficult motion I've ever had to speak on since I've been up here, but definitely something that I'm proud to be able to do. My grandfather was a proud veteran of the United States Army. He also was proud to serve the city of Revere for over thirty-one years in the Revere Fire Department, and he spent his entire life on that block. He was born in a house in the corner of Augusta Street and Maldon Street and lived for his entire life on the corner of Sigourney Street and Maldon Street and ran the business between Sigourney, Maldon, and Derby Road. So, it's pretty remarkable to spend your entire life on such a small piece of land, but it was his, and he was very proud of it, and I think it'd be very fitting to put that near his father's, and I look forward to working on this with Counsel Nowosowski and his committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any councils wishing to speak? Great motion? Motion approved?
Late motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor requests Mass Highway to repair the damaged guardrails at the intersection of North Shore Road and Oak Island Street and North Shore Road and Mills Ave. This was submitted to Mass Highway several months ago, and it still remains unaddressed. The guardrails, in their present condition, are an eyesore and, more importantly, a danger to the motoring public.
Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a motion that I submitted several months ago, and frankly, I'm appalled that the Commonwealth Department of Transportation hasn't moved in and taken corrective action. I mean, I can understand perhaps before the fiscal year, but they've, they've got a brand-new budget. There should be no problem. They're terrible-looking. They send a bad message to people passing through our community, number one, and more importantly, they're, in the present condition, they serve no purpose. They're a danger to the motoring public that use one A North Shore Road periodically, and I would hope that the Department of Transportation would move on this very quickly to correct not only that, but any other guardrails that may be on the list throughout the city. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Any councils wishing to speak? Someone in the audience?
Eric Lampadecchio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. This is a great motion. I'd also just like to ask that you also add the intersection of John Avenue and North Shore Road. There was a very bad car accident this weekend, and it's pretty much twisted metal down there. The sidewalk is untraversable, and it's actually roped off with caution tape at this time, so I'd like that to be added to this motion, please. Thank you.
That was this weekend, the accident?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not one that's been there for a while. That's good. I would hope that we can add this to the motion and get some positive action from Mass Department of Transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Powers. Ashley will add that, Madam Clerk. And no further business. Motion approved? In motion to adjourn, our next scheduled meeting will be on October twenty-third.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Counsel Rotundo?
I thought we were going to have an executive session regarding the issue of the question and answers from the mayor regarding the assessment center.
I too have, we have not received communication back that they have scheduled that. I think that the mayor's office would be looking, seeking to...
Yeah, I mean, with all due respect to the mayor, I mean, it's a pretty simple thing. All he has to do is photocopy the questions, redact the thing that he doesn't want us to have, and hand it to us. Takes two seconds.
I would agree.
And it's been now two weeks, and I wonder why, after this council's asked this. So, I would like, you know, this body to do this. Why, you know, why are we waiting for this information? We've waited now for almost, what, three months?
Well, Counsel Rotundo, if it gives you any hope, I will ask, request right after this meeting, the mayor's office again, to open up for executive sessions on the next scheduled meeting.
And I don't want a, I don't want a version of it. I want the, the actual questionnaire that was used with the answers and the names redacted, and it can be presented to the council in executive session like we spoke about. I don't need Ruben Cantor or anybody else calling me saying, you know, about the questions being aversion or what have you. I want the actual document that was submitted to the people to be actually utilized and that they put their answers on. They can redact the answers, they can redact the name. I want the questions. I don't want a third party, I don't want a second party, I want the first product.
Sounds good. I'll ask for a formal response before the next meeting, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, and our next meeting will be October twenty-third, two thousand seventeen. Have a great night.